Roll call, please.
All right. Guess it's me?
Yep. Call you now.
Chairman Bedoin Jr.
Here.
Can represent here. Roger Tagmeier.
Here.
Ron Nasda.
Here.
Timothy Monae.
Okay, we're all here. Okay. Approval of the agenda. There's a matter of case that's due now, but otherwise we need a motion to approve of the current agenda. We need a motion?
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
Okay, thank you. We get a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Timothy seconds it. Any questions on the agenda? All right, Byron, in all favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. All right. Approval of the minutes of April 28th, 2025 Planning Commission. Mr. Monae?
Yeah. There was an issue that I just received an email back this morning and I don't know why up here that the minutes I put in to the township almost over two weeks ago came back as not sent. So I have to resend them again, so I apologize. I don't know why that happened. Maybe it's the internet up here, so. I will work on that this evening and repost them tomorrow.
Mike, I knew before they had some glitches in their computer.
Yep.
Well, you did your part, okay. All right, we'll hold on till next meeting. Thank you. Oh, business.
So all in favor?
Oh, all in favor of the minutes as stated by Mr. Monae. I'll make that motion. Have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second?
Of being tabled.
Tabled, that's correct. Being tabled, thank you. Any discussion on this? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, approved. All right, now we get down to the nitty gritty. Continue discussion on the amendment of ordinance number 35 to allow backyard chickens within the zone areas known as R1 residential districts. Who wants to start? I may have one or two here. Timothy, under, I think you did it, but I want to go over it again, on section three, under D10, where it says properly dispose of chicken waste?
Yep.
Okay, was there, were you going to modify that in some fashion, or?
Well, wouldn't be disney discussion.
I mean, all of us, I know you brought it up, though. I mean, you brought up a change on it, I think?
I didn't, no.
Oh, no?
I was gonna leave that to homeowners responsibility, but we had not defined what that properly means.
Okay, that's why I have it on here, okay. It's the wording. It's the wording. Properly dispose of chicken waste. Now, this is something that we handed down from the township board that they wanted to see maybe changed or modified. So we have options. We can leave it the way it is. We can come up with something else to amend it, change the verbiage on it. Should it be somehow?
Well, for all practical purposes, I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
After drafting, based on board consensus and conversations, that maybe we should read what we have drafted thus far and take it from there, based on everyone else's conversations last time.
I think we went over it enough the last time. And then was that?
Okay.
Then we're just?
But did we read it for the public in full?
I think we should just go with what? I could make a motion that we go with this here for the, a public hearing. I think we went over the rules, regulations, and?
You're talking about this one?
Yeah, for section three.
Okay. Let's keep that around. Yeah, it was primarily section three that was, I think, of concern for you guys, even though you had two prior meetings, and actually three, counting the last one in last month, and now this one. What is a coventant deed? Anybody know?
What is a what?
C-O-V-E-N-A-N-T?
Is that in the?
I, you know, I, I, in the old one. You know what? Pass. That's not part of the new one. The ones that the township wanted us to look at, that's part of the old ones. We'll just forget that. Pass on that one. Ones in bold, the ones in bold print are the ones we've been working on. You guys have been working on.
If I may?
Yes, please.
Okay. It dawned on me in the last few days, doing a bunch of research, that I have a bigger issue with sending this right to public hearing, and here's why. We're about to make a recommendation, or not make a recommendation, to rezone the entirety of our zone, our one, our one single-family residential district. We're going to rezone the entire district. However, and this is from what I call the master zoning plan ordinance 55, passed by the township board back in 2006, adopted, amended a few times. So, section 600 reads that the intent of this district is to provide for low-density, single-family residential development and related public and semi-public buildings, facilities, accessory structures consistent with the essential, essentially rural character of the township. The provisions of this district are intended to protect and stabilize existing single-family developments and to encourage future single-family developments to occur on vacant land suitable for development contiguous to existing residential land with adequate public services and utilities. Encroachment by residential uses and activities considered capable of adversely affecting the low-density residential character of this district is discouraged. Under section 601, use is permitted by right, and that would be by law. Single-family dwellings, family daycare home, golf courses and country clubs, site condominiums, accessory uses, buildings and structures customarily incidental to the use permitted by right. In section 602, it's use is permitted by special exception, which would be commonly known as a use variance only afforded by the zoning board of appeal under Township Law and the Zoning Enabling Act of 2006, or Act 110. The following uses are permitted by special exceptions in accordance with the process outlined in section 1604 of the zoning ordinance, which explains that process. Vet and breakfast facilities, campgrounds, churches and other places of worship, group daycare home, home occupations, summer camps, model homes, accessory uses, buildings and structures customarily incidental to the uses permitted by special exception, parks, properties and/or facilities owned or operated by lying township. So here's my problem, and it's a legal question. So, so what if we amend ordinance 35? The zoning still exists. There's nothing in this zoning ordinance, the master plan ordinance 55, which allows for the use of chickens at all. So, I don't think it's fair to send it to public hearing until we get a legal definition on exactly what that is, because I've spoken to people I like to speak to, and without amending ordinance 55, it doesn't exist. I mean, once again, remember, we're going to potentially be re-zoning an entire district. That goes right to zoning. It's in what I call the master plan ordinance 55. If ordinance 55 is not adjusted, to me, this zoning ordinance amendment doesn't hold any weight. And there's a reason why it's probably not in there as such, because it has not been rezoned as such.
All right, when you ask for legal opinion, are we talking MTA?
Nope, we're talking the township attorney.
All right, and?
I just want to clarify, make sure everyone understands this. So we take ordinance 35, we amend it and rezone it an entire district, and we say, okay, our one residential districts can now have backyard chickens. The master zoning ordinance, ordinance 55, which is 96 pages long, which spells out what is permitted and not permitted in all zoned residential districts, rural, commercial or otherwise, has not been changed. And I have a question, I have a problem with that before going to public hearing. I think it'd be disingenuous to the people to say, we're sure about this, when I'm not so sure. Actually, I don't think so. And I would like the board to consider that.
If the township then goes to the attorney, and they give their advice or opinion, and they channel it back to us, then we have to take that at face value and determine accordingly what they're saying could be lawful or not. Because I, for one, I think because of other meetings, just so the public is aware of this. Having lawyers is for counsel, for counsel and advice, not where you stand here as an official or township board member and state that maybe you'll just take the advice of the attorney and that's it, and that's how I'm going to vote. That's not the way I think of it. I don't know about the other gentleman here. But I'm from old school. You took an oath of office for this township for the health, safety and welfare of its citizens. Each board member should take their own vote on their own conscience based on the material that's been provided. So I, for one, if the lawyer was to say that, this is their opinion, that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to take their advice, because we may look at it differently. That's all I'm trying to say here. So that being taken, does anybody else have any other thoughts on this?
Well, advice and opinions by law, and we're not legal binding. State Supreme Court has ruled on that many times. It is exactly that, it's advice or an opinion. That being said, I think the statute is pretty finite. Prior boards have passed ordinance 55. We either adhere to it or we don't. I don't feel, for me, there's any give or take. It's either there or it isn't.
All right, so by letting the board know this, let's say we do this, and ask for them to get ahold of the attorney and get their advice from their attorney, and it's channeled back to us, and then we can discuss it further?
Yes.
Are you guys comfortable with that?
Yes.
I guess.
I mean, if it's a bump in the road, we need to find out.
Yeah, it's a big bump in the road, yeah.
Well, I just want to make sure everyone understands that ordinance number five is, what did I say, 45? Yeah, it's 55, yeah. Defines exactly what can and cannot happen in all of our zoned areas. There's no way around that without actually changing and/or amending and adopting something and adding it to ordinance 55. And I don't want to get caught, being newer still at this, and saying, hey, we're going to amend ordinance number 35 to allow backyard chickens and rezone an entire district, but yet we haven't gone into the actual zoning. I mean, if you want to acknowledge, Josh?
Excuse me. We're not for public comment, but we'll open it up. Go ahead, sir. Say your name and where you're from, please.
Josh Stabinski.
Okay.
Nine tenths on the road.
Go ahead.
I want to know why, why there's a change in that? Because didn't the original ordinance offer that if you had an acre of property, you could still do chickens?
Two acres.
Two acres.
Yep.
So if you had two acres within the R1 district, you're still allowed to do it? But there was setbacks, and you had to be 100 feet from, depending on the neighbors or anything like that?
Right, it was 100 feet, 100 feet.
So you're talking about some lots that are 5,000 square foot with a house on them, but you don't even have room. I mean, each chicken requires eight to 10 square feet.
Right, which is why.
And then what are you going to do about the coops? Are you going to get, have to get permits for coops on? Because that's going to be a land use for that? Also, because you're taking up more square footage of the property on a substandard sized lot?
I, I agree, which is why.
I mean, why, why, why is there even a change? I mean, who cares who does what on their 30 acres away? I don't want chickens running through my yard just because they happen to get out of somebody's pad. I don't want my kids playing in it. Vecal matter and stuff like that.
Which is why, this is why.
I don't want, I don't want the animals getting chomed in by chickens. I mean, we already got fox and raccoons and everything else. You start throwing that in the mix, it's going to be more.
Okay, let me interrupt for a minute. We don't, we don't make the final decision, you know that. The board does.
But I will say to your point, which is why I've included, all fences and covered enclosures are subject to all provisions of zoning ordinance number 55. Just for that reason, absolutely. Yeah, for setbacks, size, everything.
I understand that, but I mean, on a 5,000 square foot lot, how are you going to have your setback 100 foot from either neighbor? What are you going to do with the, what are you going to do with the?
And Josh, I agree, this is why I want these questions answered, because in the ordinance, they want to change it to that you will be 10 feet from the property line or 25 feet from a residential dwelling. Well, zoning, to your point, if you're going to have an enclosure of some kind, says otherwise. So I think there needs to be clarification for this board and for the people to say exactly where are we going to this and what can and cannot we do. Could not agree more.
Right, I honestly think the original ordinance is well thought out. I mean, and well written. I, I don't know how many people here, well, I know a few that live pretty close to the water. Wouldn't you want your neighbor to have chickens that possibly get out in your yard? You know, let's say somebody's chicken gets out and comes over, your dog eats it, and you're looking at a lawsuit.
Well, when we talk, obviously, we're not lawyers. You know, you know.
Just pointing out.
And, and on the side of caution, you know. By bringing it, let's say we are to move forward. Now the township is aware of this, and now they're going to have to deal with it. But then it's going to be brought back down to us again. So I think we should just resolve it one way or the other. And if that's the only question, and it appears that that be the case, get that legal question as far as their opinion, then we can maybe decide, okay, we don't like their opinion, or we like their opinion, and we'll go from there.
I actually have a letter from another resident that couldn't make the meeting tonight.
Pardon?
I have a letter from another resident that couldn't make the meeting.
Okay, under public comment, you can bring that.
I'll bring it up to you guys then.
All right. Okay, is there anything else, Timothy?
No. No, I just want that to be taken.
So it sounds like there's only one legal question we need to get answered. Are you guys comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with it. I mean, we've been over this, two meetings.
I know. I inherited it with you, and I saw all the notes.
I thought we could get it resolved until this came up.
Yeah.
Well, with all due respect, I mean, after all my study, I mean, zoning is not an easy thing. And zoning should not be taken lightly, and zoning should not happen overnight. You're talking about a lot of, there's a lot of legalities involved. I mean, zoning should not just be two meetings. We have public comment, we have input. It should take some time to unravel this. I don't care who wants it done by next week. It's not going to be done by next week. That's not our due diligence if we don't look at every aspect of what the law says.
No, I agree with you on that. Well, all right, we're in the discussion mode, so we're discussing this. And it appears that we need to get that one question answered in some fashion by the township attorney. And can you contact the MTA as well?
Well, I can certainly, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I would appreciate that if you could. Well, all right, then we're going to have to table that. Okay. I will move on to new business.
Let's move, I move, we table it.
Okay, make a motion.
I make a motion that we table it.
You get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on tabling it until the next meet, the next meeting we decide to have? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, it's tabled. New business, establish date and time for public hearing. Well, that's going to be put on, on hold. I think we better make a motion to table that, too. Anybody want to make a motion on establishing date and time for public hearing?
I make a move, we table the hearing.
And second?
A second.
All right, any questions?
Yes, I just have a comment.
Great.
I just hope everyone understands that you do have a right right now, right here, right now. This commission can send this to public hearing at our choosing. But to do so, I think would be a disservice to the community. I just want to put it out there, it would not be illegal, but I think until we get this all ironed out, I think it's worth tabling it. That's just, yeah.
Okay, and I'll comment that I'd be very uncomfortable to even go there with a lot going on and at stake. So let's just get this question resolved, and I, I agree with you. We should not even go any further. All right, all in favor of a, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's carried. All right, we're moving on to review the short-term rental ordinance draft.
Do you have copies of that?
Hmm?
Do you have copies of that?
This is the one I got from you guys when I came on board. I have some questions. Okay, let's see, it'd be under section five, for those who have it. Section five, item number 16. I'll read it out loud. It says, "For initial short-term rental license approval, proof of complete septic and well inspection approved by the Central Michigan District Health Department as having been done in the last three years will be needed for continuation of a short-term rental. Yearly license, proof of complete septic and well inspection approved by the CMDHD will need to be done every two years." The question is, if the township should come up with a septic ordinance, which one supersedes? If the township comes up with a septic ordinance that doesn't fall in line with number 16, what happens?
Well, short-term rentals would be outside of the scope of the septic ordinance, because there will be Milton's special provisions for short-term rentals.
Okay. So actually be separate and different?
It should be included, in my opinion, that they'll be outside of the scope of the general population, if you will.
Okay.
But that's a board decision, I can't speak at that.
Well, that's, that's what, that's one of my questions. All right. Section six, no, I'm sorry, section seven, under C. I'll read it. "A local contract must reside within 60 miles of the dwelling unit used for short-term rentals and shall have a key to the dwelling and be capable of being physically present on the property within 90 minutes of being informed of an issue." Should that not be maybe part of the application? So it's mandated whoever the contact person is. We're going to have their name, rank and phone number and the whole nine yards pursuant to section, paragraph C? Should it not be under the application?
It should be on the application.
Well.
Because by ordinance, then, they'll have to list who is the contact person, whether the owner, manager, contractor, otherwise, to be notified if anything should arise.
All right. That sounds good.
I think that's feasible, that's feasible.
Okay.
You want somebody to be there within that amount of time if there is a problem.
But, but, but Timothy, what I'm getting at is, section seven says local contact regulations.
Yeah, someone's got to be local. Is 90 minutes local to you guys?
Right, but.
I don't think so. Not me personally. House will be burned down by the time someone gets there in 90 minutes. Or whatever. Not that it'd be up to them, I'm not saying it's up to them, but I mean, by the time they contact someone, I don't know. 90 minutes puts you, I can get to Lansing in 90 minutes. Well, not quite. Hour 45.
I just thought maybe it might be, that paragraph could be tied into application under section five. That would force them under the application. That if they don't abide by it, they could be penalized or disqualified.
My understanding is the applications did have to have a contact person. That was included, local.
Well, it says your name, address, telephone number, homework or cell phone, and email address of the applicant, if different than the owner, is that what you're talking about?
No. But you're actually right. I mean, if it's not in the contact, it should be the contact information. Contact is one thing of the owner of the property, but contact person who's going to be responsible in absence of the homeowner.
Yeah, I guess.
But wouldn't the contact, the possibility of the contact person changing? So that should be?
Well, how about this?
Shouldn't be in the application?
Anything I ever fill out, there's always an emergency contact. So what about a contact person for the ownership and then emergency contact? That would make the most sense. I mean, you go to a doctor, you go here, you go there, anything you fill out, even when you rent an apartment, emergency contact.
All right.
And it's section eight, C.
What's, I'm sorry, was it eight C you said?
No, it's section eight C, emergency telephone numbers and street addresses of dwelling in order to assist occupants and visitors directing emergency service personnel in the event of an emergency.
Okay, that's under land contact regulations? No, you said eight. Required posting?
In the old ordinance, it was under section five application. It was five C, number four. I know that's been mixed up because there's been modifications for what you're looking through, but that was part of the application in the original process that was proposed.
Right.
And they were making phone calls to the people to make sure it didn't go to some different number.
Yeah, it wasn't there.
So unless it's been removed in the revised proposal, it should still be there under the application section five. If it's not, you can reinsert it.
Yeah, we should always have an emergency contact number, just makes sense.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see in here where it says number of people established at a rental place. Is there a fixed number or max number?
There's not a maximum room, it's two. All of us, two per.
Bedroom or something?
Two, two per bedroom.
Right.
Okay.
What I have a problem with before speaking of numbers is that they didn't put a cap on it. And I take an issue with that. I know there's things in place that talk about 500 feet here and there, but there's, you know, different scenarios out there. And we had, I know the last board had it at 50. I think if we look at.
No, not 50 people, 12, max of 12 rounds.
50 permits. A cap on the number of permits, yeah, sorry. Yeah, that's why I said, that's my issue before we're done with this. We know there's 69 active Airbnb rental rentals right now. There could be more. I mean, you don't know about private ones or otherwise. Until we actually get a solid, concrete number, I don't think we should make any decision until we decide where we're going to go with the number. I think to leave it wide open is just not a good idea. People are entitled to peaceful enjoyment of their dwelling, and I think we have to consider what it would be a reasonable number.
What would you suggest is a reasonable number?
I can't say that until we actually get some figures about what's actually out there.
You guys discussed this before, though? Did you come up with any ballpark numbers at all?
No, but we also, I also want to look at, and this may be another legal thing, that, you know, this is in zoning. We're going to be looking at non-conforming uses. If there's people out there prior that have used rentals and proved they use rentals, state of Michigan says you must recognize non-conforming uses. And I want questions answered about that for how many does that entitle? You can't just tell everyone, I've been using a home as a rental for the last 20 years, and now because of your new rental ordinance, I can't. Especially if it hasn't transferred hands property otherwise, which non-conforming uses follow that, but.
Dan, this kind of goes to you and I being in the old board. If I remember right, it came down to, here's what number of VRVOs are out there, and we'll put something to pad over that.
Yes.
All right? And that was.
And that was gonna be established. It wasn't, it was a goal, all right? There was nothing nailed on the wall that said, "This is gonna be it."
Right.
The board was going to establish that, not us.
And they were going to see how many people actually applied for the license?
Yes.
And then, uh, go from there.
Yes.
Was that information passed on down to you guys? Did they, did they have that information?
No, because it never went as far...
The, the only way we knew it was through Eric, all right?
No.
And through the board, that was our only information into us, was this is what, somebody's gone out and said, "Here's how many VRBOs are out there, and we'll get that higher than what, all right, what's there today, but that that could be changed along the way." Right, Dan?
Right. Could change it when we got the data.
Yes.
Who's, who's, uh, who's doing the data?
Well...
Besides us, I mean, because...
No, not us, it was, it was, uh, when people applied to have a short-term rental license, we were gonna allow everybody that could prove that they had done it in the past.
Right.
Um, get their, automatically be approved, well, assuming they met the other things.
Criteria?
The other criteria. We, the, the limit wasn't, my remembrance is that we weren't gonna limit it initially, and it was after, um, everybody had applied and we were, you know, giving out the licenses, then, then that would set the number a little, we would set...
Correct.
The board would set the number just slightly higher than that, and knowing that it could also always be changed as far as what that number would be.
Right, so the township would have some idea what those numbers might be?
They went through and hired somebody to find out how many VRBOs were out there. Somebody came into the board and said, here's, they went on the net, found out as best they could, how many existed at that point. That was November of last year.
Was that...
They had, they had until first of January, I believe it was, to, isn't that correct? Yeah, first of January to actually apply for the licenses. But what happened was the, the new board took away the ordinance, rescinded it, so we never really got the data to say how many rentals we were.
Right.
That's true. Well, but there was, there was a counting, Harry was doing that, right? And he was running fifty, and he had a lot of good records. I sat with him and I went through a whole bunch of stuff. And they had set the number at fifty, and right on the site, there's like a number of how many had been approved to date out of the fifty, and it was in the forties.
Yeah, it was close.
That's still out there.
Yes, you can find it out there, but...
Is it still out there?
Yes, when he was let go, there wasn't an ordinance officer, and from my understanding, if I'm remembering correctly, Paul Bertrand was named or volunteered to be the acting ordinance officer. And I'm guessing he's busy enough that he's not necessarily into the data end of what is gonna be required to have the data.
Now, I will say, we do have a resident that spent two days doing this, and she found sixty-nine active...
Yeah, you mentioned sixty-nine.
Verbally, so... So my point to all this, if there's any concern about a number, like, the board has the final decision, but I would think it would be justified for this commission to come up and do our due diligence and come up with a number that would be just a recommendation. After all, that's all we're doing, we're just here to make a recommendation, we have no final say whatsoever.
Is there no number in the proposed, the new ordinance?
No, that's, that's the problem, I have, there's not a cap. Yeah. And I think we need to do our due diligence and find out what that number could, should, or not be, basically.
Well, I guess, uh, need to get ahold of supervisor and find out what the info is. Get the data, huh? What do you think?
I think so.
It's in Harry's desk, maybe.
I'm sorry?
It's, it was in Harry's desk.
Well, we'll just get ahold of the supervisor.
If you look at the website under the short-term rentals, it still says, "None of available rental licenses, forty-one applied of the fifty that they had." That's still on the website from before.
Well, what I'll ask, what I prefer is hard data, so we'll request that. Give me a minute.
But I'm pretty sure that people stopped applying because the ordinance got rescinded, and, uh...
Well, the forty-one application should be in the desk. I asked Paul if, because I went through and sued the septic inspection and the whole application, and all the drawings and that, all requirements, and I said, "With the new proposal, am I gonna have to start over?" And he said, "No." The ones that were approved will meet the new proposed ordinance. So all of those should be available, and you can count and see if it's forty-one, but that only answers how many applied to the fifty limit, not how many you want to propose be allowed.
Or would exist.
Or would exist, yeah. Exist, and then what you wanna allow.
And going on memory, that, that fifty number, that's what they started out with, forty-one out of fifty, but I believe it was set up that if you went over that, if the number of applications that came in went over fifty,
Yes.
we would continue.
Yes.
That was not everything.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Seventy-five rings a number.
Seventy-five what?
Seventy-five, seventy-five instead of fifty.
Oh, is in that, okay.
Most interesting. Thank you. Both of you. All right, any, uh, anything else, gentlemen, on this one? I think I'm gonna be, one, one or two more, I think.
It says seventy-five.
All right, there, there is one. Section eight, D. It says, "The maximum occupancy of the dwelling unit as permitted by this ordinance."
Does that mean in the number of occupants you can have in your dwellings, the way I understand that?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, but what's maximum?
Depending on how many rooms you have, bedrooms, you know.
It's how many bedrooms, yeah.
Right. The, the, Mr. Chairman, the original one that was passed last year had a maximum of twelve. Didn't matter how many, I mean, if you had twelve bedrooms, you could still only rent to twelve people.
Okay, now that's been changed?
But if you had one bedroom, you couldn't rent to twelve?
No, you could only rent...
Because there were limitations on per bedroom and whatever.
There was a limitations on twelve, on number of people per bedroom. But the maximum was clamped at twelve, no matter what. You could never go over twelve. This new STR that the board is proposing does not have that maximum, so if you had a ten-bedroom house, then...
Two per bedroom.
That's one, twenty people.
Yeah, you can have twenty.
Do you want me to read what it said?
Go ahead, please.
"The maximum occupancy for any dwelling is two occupants per bedroom plus four additional occupants. The use of campers, recreational vehicles, tents, or other temporary dwellings to provide additional occupancy on the premises is not permitted. Occupants may have visitors, provided that the total number of visitors does not exceed the total number of occupants. No short-term rental shall be occupied by more than twelve occupants under any circumstances."
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, I take issue with that, here's why. So if I have a place up here, and, um, and I thought this before, and your place allows up to that twelve, okay. So I have a couple people that just wanna stop by and have cocktails. I'm not letting those people drive, but under the ordinance, if those people stay at the rental, I'm in violation of the ordinance. And I don't think that is anything we need to monitor, I think it would be a disgrace to say, "Oh, well, you know, some people were drinking, we have to kick 'em out now." I don't agree with it. Because it'd be over the maximum that you just read. Although, otherwise, I agree with it, but I don't like things that are so broad that someone could interpret it, and the neighbor could say, "Oh, well, they had ten p, extra people over there." Well, they're drinking, you want them to drive? I wouldn't, I'm not messing you.
Can't they take, can't they take responsibility and drive them to their home?
What if they're drinking too?
If they've been at the north state...
Yeah, that's how broad it is, that's what I'm saying. If I have people over my place and I've been drinking with them, I don't want them to drive. I know it's a, it's a very extreme scenario, and this is why I don't like things so broad, to say, you're, well, you're just past, well, I mean, I don't know. It's just, it's, maybe it's a personal thing, I don't know, I just think it's too broad.
I understand that, but, I mean, you could come up with a bunch of scenarios.
Absolutely, that's, that's why.
What if a person got really sick, and they had a migraine, and they're vomiting and all this stuff?
That's my point, which is why I don't like that part of it.
But how do you fit all those in?
You don't, you're removing, yeah.
It comes down to a common sense issue.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And the neighbors understanding what's going on, also, near, nearby, you know, if something happens, of course somebody's gonna be there, it's just the way it is.
I, I appreciate the comments, and I'm allowing it to happen, but we just need to keep it to a null because we wanna get to public comment. I don't want you folks being here all night either. But you're helping us out, but thank you.
But I do believe that there should be a maximum limit of twelve people.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Because not every rental will qualify for the twelve.
Correct, yeah.
Two bedrooms times two plus one.
Some may qualify, you know, qualify for more than twelve, but I'm saying, my opinion is, it should be clamped at twelve, maximum, to, to try to appease the neighbors of that rental property. You know, you don't wanna have twenty people there, party, party, party.
Rentals will do different things.
Yes.
I was in that business, and renters will, they don't care.
They stretch it, they stretch it.
So, yeah, they'll invite visitors over, and, you know, who's gonna police it, it's, but if, at least, we gotta put a maximum on it.
I agree.
Can I just say one more thing?
Go ahead, go ahead.
The prior one that was approved had the two per bedroom plus four, and now it says two, plus two. Is there any way you can get back to the plus four? I mean, we've had situations where, you know, we've got the adults, but then we have a pull-up couch, and, you know, the little kids are on the floor, you know. To, for us, for our situation, we never went over twelve, but the plus four helps our situation a lot, and probably others too. You know, so...
It don't help with all the parking that comes with it, if there's twelve guys, don't be all...
No, but you have to have space.
Whoa, 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 no cross-discussion, because we'll get carried away. I, I acknowledged her, all right?
No problem.
I'm trying to, trying to help you guys out here too, you know?
I don't know why it went down to two, I guess I just would hope it would be put back to plus four, but still with the twelve cap.
I will say, I've read, and this is the confusing part, for me maybe a little bit, in other townships that have short-term rental ordinances, and I even kinda pondered this last board, is, um, where do we, if we even should define what's an occupant? Is it a two-year-old? Is it a four-year-old? Is it a six-year-old? I know, you know, you know what I'm saying, so I, I don't take issue with that, I'm just like, well, I mean, I don't know, a two-year-old to me is, I don't know, it, that's tricky for me, just, just so you know.
But it's a worm body that's counted, and therefore, you know, the plus four, I guess I would give more leeway to us as owners, knowing we still have to be responsible and can't go over twelve no matter what.
Now, for me, because everybody knows I'm a stickler about rules and procedures, I could get really sticky and say, "Well, whose guideline determines a bedroom?" I technically have three bedrooms, as defined, but with my family, we always used them for as a kid. But Freddie Mae and Fanny, Freddie Mac and Fanny Mae say I don't have three bedrooms, because only one room has a closet. So even though there's three technical bedrooms that are, have doors and everything else, is someone gonna check in and say, "Well, you're not legally defined as a three-bedroom," because there's only one that has closets, you're technically only a one-bedroom? We don't need to go there, I'm just saying, this is how tricky it could get, I'm just saying.
Being new on the board, who came up with this plus four?
I, I don't know.
I'm just asking, you know...
I guess Harry must have at that point. Would you agree?
Maybe the other board.
Yes. I mean, kind of...
And I think they were using a different township's ordinance that they thought was, they looked through a whole bunch of different...
That is correct.
And they either combined, or they picked the one, I don't recall which town it was, but they picked the one that they thought was more appropriate.
But they didn't do it verbatim, all right? Harry tried to meld it together.
Yes, correct.
And, and that's kind of how it came about, and we didn't argue about it at that time when we approved it.
Well, we, they originally didn't have them, or they had the maximum of twelve, and then they took it out, and then the planning commission recommended they put maximum twelve back in, which they did.
Wouldn't it be on the potential renter? Everybody else got to talk, give me a second.
No, 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 stop, just do, come on, be respectful. I mean, normally, it's supposed to be under public comment, I'm allowing people, but let me acknowledge you first, okay? All right, um, so, I think in twelve max, two-bedroom, four people, plus four. Well, we'll need to get some data. So that maybe will be part of what Mr. Bertrand will have to provide for us, so we can digest something like this. This is sort of relatively new to me, but maybe some of the guys as well, but I don't know where this plus four, how this plus, I look at bedrooms. And maybe I'm old custom, you know, how many people can be in a bedroom? You know, maybe I'm old school on that, all right? We'll find out, we'll get ahold of Mr. Bertrand. So that question of maximum occupancy brought a discussion, didn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I got, I got one. All right, um, let's see here. I think those are the questions I highlighted. Anybody else have any questions on the STR they wanna bring up?
I kinda wanna go and ask you a question about fire alarms, all right? Are you willing, yes, are you willing to go through and take it down and get this ordinance to say they all have to talk to each other?
What do you mean?
The fire, it, the fire alarms that you got, smoke detectors.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm sorry, it's smoke detectors.
You're fire alarms.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, yes.
My smoke detectors, yes?
To take 'em down and go out and buy new ones that communicate to each other, not by wire, but by, uh...
They're wireless.
Wireless. I mean, when I read that...
Is that in here?
No. Not yet.
Oh, I mean, when the first one came through, and I'm sure the rest of us all hear, I mean, we now have, we have everything in it, you know, we have a fire extinguisher by the stove, we have one outside by the grill, we have one on every level, we have the carbon monoxide, I mean, we were all, I'm speaking for me, but probably everybody, we were fully prepared to go ahead with all of this. So we have all this, we paid the seven hundred dollars for the septic inspection, you know, we've, we've done all of that. We were all ready to go, and then it was just all kind of blown out.
Did I miss the fact that it's not in ours? This wireless?
I didn't know there was such things as the wireless.
The smoke detectors are in there.
All right.
Each bedroom.
Each bedroom, but...
They should be outside of the bedrooms too.
Does it not say that they have to be wireless?
No.
Where is that?
I'm sorry, if I read that wrong, I apologize.
I guess I, Mr. Chairman, I, I guess I question why the board making, attempting to make changes to what was previously already approved, and, I mean, they spent two years going through that line by line, I mean, that was a, that was a big deal, doing that, and it got passed by the board, and although all the people that owned properties probably weren't a hundred percent positive with everything, they all agreed that they could live with it, and it was a good ordinance. Why is, why did the new board, first off, why did they cancel it? And second off, if they're gonna put in a new short-term rental, why don't they do... And second off, if they're gonna put in a new short-term rental, why don't they do the same one? You know, what was wrong with that one? I mean, they're making little changes here and there, you know, the number, you know, of, it's, I, I just don't understand why they're attempting to change something that was worked on so hard and, and people agreed with it and was going forward with it, and why are we reinventing it?
Well, Dan, do you know why they rescinded it? I mean, I don't.
I have my opinion, but I'm not gonna say that in public.
Tell me later.
You know.
I want to know why they rescinded it. So, I'll open it up to the audience. Anybody know why they rescinded it?
Because they wanted their brand on it.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Harry was, Harry was a, a prime mover in, in that one, and there are some, there's some friction between Harry and Paul.
Yes.
You mean, you're saying they want, they wanted to put their brand on it?
Yeah. Same thing with the chicken ordinance.
We all have the same opinion that we won't say publicly.
I'll say Paul.
It's true.
All right, okay.
I already know.
I have to agree with Dan.
Oh, man, that's a bombshell.
These two gentlemen went through this for two years. Just put it out there for the public hearing and get it passed to the board.
I'm sorry. I would not privy to that information.
This one was in the township for many times, weren't you?
Oh, yes.
And you.
I mean, I spent hours with Harry.
Yes, you did. I was there.
Okay.
This isn't ready to go to public hearing. It's your term rental.
No.
Well, the original one is.
No, 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 no.
The original one is.
Abs- well, they're not privy to that one in front of mine. I mean, I have my copy at the house of the old one, but if we're gonna go to public hearing, we have to make a decision. I mean.
Yep, yep. Well, I'm gonna need to do some more homework on this before I put my stamp on it.
And for the record, ma'am, I would never make any rental do anything more than any of our other residents would have to do. I'm not putting wireless smoke detectors in that talk to each other, but if you require you, then I best do it myself because I'm no better or no worse.
I mean, we all have the smoke detectors all over, but they're not wireless.
Absolutely, and I have carbon, I have a little extinguisher. Square feet, I'm just stopping on them.
You kidding me? No.
We have short-term rental. It was passed by the previous board. It had been worked on.
Well, that isn't the discussion of the evening, so we should leave that alone right now, guys. Just saying.
But it's info I want to look into more, because if that's evident, then we need to look at this thing a little more carefully as to what if any, if any changes should be made, if it was in-existent and the people lived with it, accepted it at that time. I want to know why they rescinded it.
I just told you.
Yeah, you may have told me, but you know, what was the reasoning behind it?
It is the reason.
Just because they want their stamp on it? Is that what you're saying?
I think a different way to say it is, you know, what, what did the board members who are new that were voted in, what was their platform in terms of what, so they wanted to put the sewer, the septic on hold, short-term rental on hold. There were things that they campaigned on.
Yes.
And so, they took a little bit of time after they came into office to get the lay of the land or whatever, and then they held up their word and said, "Okay, this is on hold, this is on hold, this is canceled." The same thing.
All right, I, I get that. We, we know all that.
But it was supposed to be being looked at, right, to make, to go back again and say what changes.
Now, we got it. Now, we got, now we got this curveball you threw at it. Threw at me, anyway. All right. I don't think we need to go any further in discussion then if that's the case. You guys have been doing it for two years, and then it's been rescinded. I, I moved, I'll make a motion. We table this until we have our next meeting, so I can get some information. Do I get a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You'll be okay.
I'm old-school. When you take the oath of office, I go by that. I'm sorry.
You'll, you'll be fine.
I'll be fine, all right. I'll be fine. Believe me. All right. Well, now we can get the public comments. We've had some of that already, but I'll open, open the floor up to public comments. Yes, ma'am.
Do you want me to officially sit up here?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. My name is April Cairns.
Please spell that for the record.
I live in Garrish Township, but I am the local contact and property manager for my daughter's rental in Lion Township. She's in New Orleans, so I'm here. So, I just have a couple of questions that I guess you could get to as you're reviewing this and going forward. Section, let me see, the second page of the three, number three definitions under number I, occupant.
What section again, please?
It's under the de- section three definitions.
Yes.
Under I.
Number, yeah, letter I, occupant.
Yes.
An individual of at least 24 months of age. Is that, you know, is that really what you meant? It wasn't like, I don't know. That just seemed weird. I don't know if it was in the old one or not, but that just kind of jumped out at me. Keeping going, section L, special events. I think we've all, that was under the old. It's not italicized at, at all. But when I read this, we have ladies coming this weekend that never disclosed anything when they rented it, but now they tell us they're having a bachelorette party with six ladies. So, I don't know how you can, yeah, if it's a big wedding in the tent in the backyard and all of that, but if you've just got six girls coming and they're saying, "It's a bachelorette party," do we have to tell them no? I, I know they can get crazy. These are just my questions for things for you to think about, okay? We all know we don't want outdoor lawn parties, weddings, huge family reunions and receptions, but that just hit me because all of a sudden, these girls want to come early so they can set up for their bachelorette party. We're like, "Really?" Okay. Section five, the application. My question is, we had the original application. Hopefully, you guys have everything that we've done. It's just about everything of all of these things listed. We have it done already. Will you require a new application? Or will the previous ones that we did last November suffice? That's my question for you to think about.
Well, that'll be a board decision, if I may. We could recommend that. I think they most certainly, if all the criteria is met, should roll over. Absolutely.
I mean, we've had all the inspections. We've done all the floor plans. We've got everything in place, you know. Do we have to redo that or?
No, you're not spending $700 for another septic inspection. No. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, that didn't, that was not well. No, that was not good. Um, and under the application, section five B, number four, I think that's what you were looking for. If the owner of the proposed short-term rental does not qualify or does not desire to be the local agent, then the written designation by the owner, I think that's what you're looking for, where it designates the local person.
Okay. Thank you.
Then to section six, number A, which we've all talked about, you know, can it go back to four additional instead of two, and then no higher than the twelve? The other thing it says in here, unless a lower or higher number can be justified and approved by the township ordinance officers, I guess, what would that take? I mean, do I have to?
If you have a drunk friend, you gotta call the ordinance officer. I am totally killing it.
Well, but I mean, you know, just in the application process, you know, how, I don't know. Um, let me see. Okay, then section seven, local contact regulations, number C. I am the local contact. I can be here in 10 minutes because I just live on the other side of the lake. But when it has to be 24 hours a day, every day of the week, I cannot guarantee you that I am never going to leave Garrish and Lion Township. I have to go other places. So, can we have like a backup to me?
We can put in there, maybe something like, as easy to believe.
That's like a suggestion. I mean, to say I can never leave this 30-mile radius.
Maybe alternate?
You know.
Maybe an alternate?
Yeah, I mean, if we can give a, an alternate or backup, I mean, I'm here 90% of the time, but I can't guarantee I'm never going to leave.
I would say need and then once, like, you read it.
Well, section B says, "A local contact is responsible for responding to calls from occupants, visitors, and township representatives, including public safety, 24 hours, seven, every day of the week, including holidays." Now, I will answer, I will answer your phone call. I can answer your phone call wherever I'm at. If that's what that means, that's fine. But then the next one, C, the contact must reside within 60 miles of the dwelling, use the short-term rental, and be able to come within 90 minutes. I can't guarantee I will always be within 90 minutes.
You might be at a doctor appointment. Who knows?
Who knows? You know. So, can we have like an alternate? You can always call me. I will always have my phone on me, which is number B. But number C, I don't think anybody can guarantee they're never gonna leave within, you know, a 60-mile radius, that they're within every single day. So, maybe an alternate there?
I'm gonna play devil's advocate, if I may.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, if you don't mind.
No, I don't mind.
If you live in an apartment complex and they have a 24-hour emergency contact, doesn't someone always have to be available? I'm just, I'm not.
I don't know. I've never lived in the parks, so.
I'm not taking it. I'm, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, so.
I mean, but to have a phone number, yes, you can always call me.
Sure.
But that doesn't mean, and a lot of times, you know, we've had just a couple of incidences over the last three years where the neighbor called and said, "Yeah, you know, they're parked kind of in my parking spot." We've called him up, taken care of it. It has not required us to physically be at the property, but we've taken care of it. To everybody's, you know.
I would hope common sense would.
Agreement.
Override to say when you must show up and you shouldn't show up for something like, I mean, yeah, I would, I would hope.
Yeah. But if, you know, if you'd allow like an alternative. Because my son is here, and it's hardly never where the two of us are going at the same time out of the area, so. And then the only other, let me see, um, okay, required postings, section eight. Letter E. Where you're requi- they're requiring that the renter sign a document that they have reviewed all the ordinances and understand the fines that may result. Are you gonna come up with, my, my thoughts here, are you gonna come up with a standard form? Or do we just, in our welcome letters, say you have to check out these ordinance? But this is saying that the renter has to sign a document. That they've read all the ordinances. You know, we can provide the webpage so they can go and look at all of the ordinances for the township. But then it says, "The renter, as part of their rental agreement, have the renter sign a document that they have reviewed them and understand that fines may result."
Um, just devil's advocate, can that not be included in your rental agreement?
But they have to sign it. We can put it in our, well.
You don't allow electronic signatures? I mean, just asking.
Do you have a contract? Do you make people sign?
We go through verbal.
Do you have a book, like a booklet, when they come in? This is.
We have a guest information book, but nothing they have to sign. The book has all the information in it.
Sorry, I was just gonna say that I think with the platforms like VRBO and Airbnb and those, when they make the agreement to rent the place, they are bound by what you have in your description, and I forget what all the sections of it are. And so, that's, that's what they're bound to, so.
But they have a.
It's gonna be harder to get signatures because I don't know if, that either of those platforms has any kind of document signed thing.
And that's fair. So, let me ask you this. So, I will tell you, the reason I think part of this came about is that I don't want Lion Township to have to play police officers when it comes to the short-term rental ordinance. I think the responsibility needs to be on the homeowners or the people renting them out.
And it should.
And at the end of the day, if you have renters and someone has to sign them, and somehow they do, they just, I don't know, they must get a key from someone, the whole idea.
Just electronic key pad?
Yeah, you might have to do something like, because the whole idea was that they would acknowledge the ordinance as such because there were problems in the past about where they could walk on private property, where they couldn't, burning or otherwise. Okay, if they don't sign that, we're not coming after the renters. We're coming after you because you, you were the contact person, the owner. It was your duty to make sure that your renters understood the quote-unquote, we'll call them bylaws.
Right.
So, it puts the responsibility, it takes it off of the township having to police the idea of what's expected of your renters, because everyone can expect something different other than our ordinance. It puts the responsibility on the people renting them, and I think that's justified for me.
I mean, we have our disclosures online that we, you know, when they look.
Sure, yeah.
You know, they have all, we have all our disclosures and information, and we say, you know, there's a pet policy. There's the noise ordinance, and the noise, the pet ordinance, and all those.
Yeah.
Things, yeah. But by them.
But they need to know.
Accepting that as part of the rental, you wouldn't consider that, then? You'd still want them to sign something?
Well, there's, I know it's not proper English, but I'm a legal freak, and Judge Judy always said it best. If it ain't in writing, it doesn't exist.
But why can't we attach the short-term rental ordinance as it's accepted and becomes, you know, enacted here into our posting? Because even if you say, "I, I need to get them to sign it."
Yeah. Oh, I think you should. That's a great idea.
And you think about a Verizon contract and all these pages, you know? I can't guarantee that they read every word of it, so just, I mean.
No, no, you scroll down, accept the terms, you just check the box and sign your name. Whether they read it or not is not my responsibility. It's not your responsibility, but they're on record that they understood what our.
And I think it should be amended to say something about that any rental agreement, whether it's outside of the Airbnb or VRBO, but electronically, it needs to be in the agreed, you know, rules and regulations of your rental. And by them agreeing to rent under those, those rules, that's like. But that's not, it's needed at me making copies of that and then collecting signatures from people. That's acknowledgement electronically that you're renting of these.
Does it say paper copy?
Well, it says they have to sign, so.
Well, and.
I don't know how else they would sign other than.
So, maybe that's something we, we, we ask, like, what is acceptable as far as an acceptance of the terms, like confirmation, yeah, to the terms and agreement, yeah. That's fair. That's fair. You mean, you're the people, you're the renters. That's what we need to hear from.
Okay.
But you do, do you accept the fact that without some form of acknowledgement, there's nothing on record that says they understand what our ordinances are, and then ultimately, who's responsible for that?
So, who's responsible if they start blowing out fireworks? Them or you?
Well, we've told them that you cannot do that.
Yeah, but they signed something. They, they're responsible.
And then if a neighbor's call, I mean, I live across the lake, so, and I don't think any of us live next to our rental to know that, but yes, it would be our responsibility to tell them, "You have to stop. You can't do this."
If I may.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Your contract is with your renters. The township's contract is with you. That's how that, that flows.
Right.
You are responsible for your renters because you're renting that out.
Right, that's what I said.
You, you are responsible for the township if anything happens.
That's what I said. I agree with that, yeah.
A hundred percent. It's, I mean, super. It's, I mean, super rate motel doesn't go to Crawford when somebody, you know, does something to their bill. You know, I mean, it's.
I think every landlord or owner or whatever would agree.
Yeah.
And, and does it just, I mean, I've never rented before, I've rented eight places, but I have not. I've rented from someone, I have rented. Does it not help protect you that they've acknowledged all of those rules from a legal perspective? That if anything should happen, you're ultimately, let's say, responsible, but you have a recourse because they knew the rules?
But if I put it in all of my disclosure documents that I attach, that they have to, that they get when they sign up electronically, to me, you know, I, I don't, that's, to me, that would be good enough. I have, you tell me I have to put it in my disclosure, I will. I'll go out on Airbnb, VRBO, and I'll make sure that's.
Like the burn ordinance, the fireworks ordinance, the noise ordinance, this, 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 with no acknowledgement?
And I think that's what you brought up, right?
Yeah.
It's just basically a checkbox. So that they check it when they, when they.
Yeah.
Just like a Verizon bill, when you, when you get a new Verizon service, I'm sure.
Yeah, but the.
I'm not going to read through the 4,000 words there.
Well, right, but the problem is, I think, that unless, I mean, I can call it Airbnb or VRBO tomorrow, but they, they're not set up that way. Like, there's already my rules I've typed in there, but at the end, there's no, at least on my end, I'm not the one signing, you know, renting, but I'm not there. Maybe there is something where they have to check and say.
But I haven't seen where.
I can't see it.
I haven't seen where they've said, yes, they've checked this.
Yeah, so whatever.
Somebody else. We need to wrap it up.
Okay. I only have one other quick thing.
I mean, it's actually, it's simple.
Okay.
Then once they click, say, yeah, I'm scheduling this, they've accepted that.
Excuse me, she's got one more question so we can move on.
And this is real quick.
All right, go ahead.
The very end, effective date. This ordinance shall become effective 30 days from publication. So originally, when you had the original one, it was going to be, take effect January 1st. We all had November and December to get everything done and approved before January 1st. But I guess now, I guess maybe rethink that, because we all have summer rentals. And if you put this in August 1st, you know, we, we may not even have our application, unless you're sticking with our approved one. That's all. Just rethinking the effective.
Thank you.
But there are people that probably held off from putting the application because they didn't want to spend the money knowing that it was likely that it was going to put on hold. I ended up with going through all of it and saying, I just wanted this, I didn't want it.
We did too, we got it here, but everything, people that probably did.
All right.
Because they didn't want us to see it.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I know we went over, but that's fine. Anyone, anyone else?
Can I approach and handle that?
Now you can, under public comment, yeah.
All right, fine. I'll be nice and aim to each of you. This is a letter from the resident that couldn't make it about the chicken ordinance.
Thank you.
He'd be enough in front of people, rather talk from the back. So the chicken ordinance, it just, I don't, like I said earlier, I don't think there's anything wrong with the board was. I don't even know why it was changed. Do we have a huge influx of people trying to bring chickens in here? Then why are we bothering even looking at it?
Well, the township board gave it to this planning commission.
They asked us to look at it.
We were obligated to look at it.
Yeah.
Period. I said, no matter who it is, what it is, if they're, the plant, if the township board passed it down to the planning commission to review, that's our obligation, we'll review it. That's what we're doing.
Two people in R1 during the time I worked here had chickens. They both had run-ins with me, both had to remove their chickens. How many homes do we have in R1? I don't even know. We're talking about two out of everything in our township. Why are we trying to change an ordinance for two? What's the use? What, what, what other doors does that open? I mean, we're talking noise, we're talking, a, a bunch of things. I've had chickens in the past, all right? Not, not here, where I lived further up north on a bunch of acreage, but they're noisy, they're messy, they're royal pain, they get out, they chum in, predators. There's no reason to bring any of that, any more of that into here. We already have raccoons, bears, whatever, you know, coming through the, the township. It's going to happen.
Skunks.
The more, what's that?
Skunks.
Skunks, everything. The, the more small animals and prey items you bring in, the more those animals are going to get in closer. That, that's pretty much all I got to say. I mean, there's no reason to change it. It was written very well. I looked over that ordinance multiple times. And it just seems kind of questionable whether it may, may have been a platform to say, yeah, we're going to change that for you or something, I have no idea.
Well, as I'm learning here, it's, some of these guys have been here for a couple of years, so.
Well, you've been around the block.
I know, I know, I know, but I'm not as well-versed that these two guys have been around for two years. I'm playing catch-up here. But I do know that we got to follow protocol.
Right.
No matter what. And it's not going to be rushed through and by no means it's going to be, he brought up a legal question, all right? We're uncomfortable, we'll pursue it, we'll find out the answer. We'll try and come up with maybe an idea when we can maybe have the next meeting before you guys leave. And then we'll answer that question, then we can move on.
Right. And to get on to the short-term rental, I mean, you're, you're just being aware that everything was set in stone already and ready to go. That's the one you need to look at. There's no, if it was already there, why pull it just to change an hand and a butt and put it back out?
Amen.
All right? To your point also, ma'am, you said, you know, you've got a bachelorette party coming in. It's on you to deny that, if your place cannot handle it.
Well, it's only six girls, but we didn't know it was a party.
Right. But I don't, I don't know the capacity limits on your place as it sits. I mean, you, you don't want to have. Okay, so then you're fine. I mean, there's no issues with that. But when you get on to the occupancy, you brought up the, the two plus four, that used to be the old ordinance. If you're on a single-bedroom, single-bath cabin, you don't want two plus four in there. There's nothing there that can handle that.
Oh, yeah, no, we're.
You know, so these, these people, you as the rent, as the owner have to be diligent in knowing how many people are coming in. And know that you're going to meet your capacities and be fine, or stay under your capacity. And they have to be honest about what's bringing, coming in, and, and you can kick them out at any point if they're, if they're not honest about it.
True.
And, and this all goes back to the checkbox and, and the local ordinances and everything on the website and however. Once they click that link, saying schedule it, they have accepted that.
They've accepted what we've given.
They've accepted whether they read it or not, if, like we said. If, I, I, I'm, I definitely do it. If a contract comes out, I go, agree. We all do.
We all do it.
Yeah.
We all can't make them sit down with me and read it.
They acknowledge it.
But that acknowledges and that protects you. All right, and that's, that's it right there, because when the township comes out against you and says, hey, you got to take care of this, 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 and this, you can put it right back on, you guys broke this ordinance. Oh, we didn't know about any ordinance, you checked the box.
We did.
Check the box, yeah, I agree.
You know, shame on you. So the damages and the fees get kicked to you. I mean, it's just the way it goes. I think the 12 occupancy was fantastic idea, honestly. I know of one house in particular that added a bunch of bedrooms, just so they could get more capacity in them.
We all know that one.
Right. Nothing could be done about it because it was done correctly. But having the capacity on short-term rental stops that kind of stuff from happening. Why, why remodel your home if you're only going to be able to fit 12? Okay? You know, you're, you're going to inevitably get somebody that's got a small cabin that decides to divide the eight-by-eight bedroom into two four-by-four, or four-by-eights and slam, and slam two bunk beds in there and call it.
Wait, wait, with or without a closet?
Well, no closet, of course. No closet, no egress window, oh, that's, that's another thing. When we get into short-term, what's that?
I think there's a closet.
They're going to have to fit a small child, obviously. So when you get into short-term rentals, you're also looking at that technically, because it's not a long-term rental, it's a full-time.
Yeah.
Occupancy. You got a bunch of different people going in now. You have to almost classify it like a hotel motel, all right? Which means that that is a light commercial application. So you have to kind of go above and beyond standard building codes. You have to go to almost a commercial level on it. If, having regular inspections, which I can believe is in there yearly, you know, safety inspections of the home, upgrading the, the smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors, which you've done already, which is fantastic, right? You know, simple things like that. It just, it is technically a business and it is technically commercial. But it's in an R1 district as a rental. Okay? All right, that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Chris Hudson. Lion Township, I have a place in Lion Township.
K or C?
K, R, I, S.
Yep.
82 A U S T, as I drive. As a recommendation, just based on conversations that I've had with Paul, once this got canceled and then it was coming into the new rental season and thinking, okay, how soon is this going to be enacted and all that stuff? Based on my knowledge of him being the ordinance person, or at least acting ordinance person, the way he conveyed it to me, because when I came up here, I, when I came to the township to talk to him, I asked, do you have, did you take the old ordinance and then start to highlight it, like I think you did, the new one there? And then is that available for me to look at online so that I can see what the changes are? So then I can make informed comments about the new one, instead of having to like lay them side by side and figure out, well, what's changed? Because nobody could tell me immediately, like, oh, it's these four things that have changed. And so it seems like there needs to be some discussion with Paul, because one of the comments he made to me was that what he's trying to get, like, he's gotten feedback from people. And he's trying to, and maybe it's he and the board are trying to take people's comments into consideration in making these changes to the original document. But it's not apparent to the public. It's not easy to vet out. You've printed it out and everything, and you got to lay it side by side. It's, it's kind of a funny way to do it. But I think there probably needs to be some discussion between this group and then Paul to find out what the plan is going forward to make it a little bit more easy to follow. And then I, I kind of agree that, you know, the old one was pretty good. And if we're taking public comments behind the scenes and then making changes to it, is that the right way? I mean, it's the board's decision to modify it, obviously, and they are capable and able to do that. But it's going to come to public comment again, and then people like us that went through the first one are going to have all these questions. So I don't know what your guys' next step is, but it seems like sitting down with Paul and making a plan and be.
I'm going to agree with you when you said the original ordinance. I wrote down here, ask for the original STR ordinance, because we don't have that.
It's still on the web.
Maybe on the web. We have, you have a hard copy of it?
That's the only thing I could find on.
No.
I don't have a document.
Okay, that's what I'm getting at, so I.
I have the original, that was effective.
It was, it was buried, you're buried in some meetings.
I thought when I came up to the township, Paul, and asked Paul, I thought he was going to be able to hand me the.
I wrote it down, ma'am, because the changes we see here that are highlighted are what the township board is asking this planning commission to look at. So I don't have the original, like she has, side by side, so I can look at it myself and compare what the original said. So maybe, maybe there was nothing wrong with the original, from what you guys were telling me.
Mr. Richardson and I both should have one that says draft on it.
Okay.
Well.
The original one is out there under STR.
I think what they're talking about as the original one was the original passed for, you know, ordinance. The one that we actually passed, and that became official. And it's, it's, it's still on the township web.
Under the ordinances, this is the ordinance numbers 65. This is what I printed, ordinance 65. It doesn't say rescinded or anything on it.
That's correct, it doesn't.
So all my questions pertaining to this document.
Well, I wrote it down and you rask about, you're right.
After that did rescind it. So are you asking also to, I mean, just to understand what this new temporary draft is? In that, like she was saying, it was just buried in the minutes? Okay.
It, it wasn't like put under the ordinance, why, that here's the.
I'm not going to defend anyone's actions right now, and I'm not going to speak for anyone else. That being said, I will defend all day any board, including the current board. It is not, they're not legally obligated to supply it at this time. This was a recommendation procedurally that goes through the Lion Township Board in this case, asking the plan, excuse me, gentlemen, I'm speaking, thank you, to review what they had put forth. From there, we take all of it into consideration. Everything that we get out there from the people otherwise, it then goes to a hearing. And at that time, those, all that information, then the planning commission by statute must make a recommendation after the public hearing is closed. From there, it's not even done. It then by statute has to go to the county. Even though the county dissolved their planning commission in 2022, they must put in place by statute a recommendation board or otherwise, or they have the right to not review it. From there, it still comes back to the board and the planning commission before anything else can be done. So they're not really required, in defense of any board, to make available to the public what the draft is until, before the public hearing, and that should be the 15 days notice. At that time, because right now, what you may read may stand, it may change, it may not stand, so.
What's your definition of the public meeting?
This is a public meeting, this is not the formal public hearing required by statute. There's a very, very set.
This is not a public hearing.
And I have.
I'm just asking, I don't know.
Yeah, 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 and I have a complete list, there are, this is why I was saying it takes a while. Here is, this is from Michigan State, I have one through MTA, I have one through Michigan Municipal, I have one from Hartford, which are, that pertain to state law. There is a whole procedural guideline that this must go through. And even if we put it out there right now, well, we can't, if the board put it out, all you're going to read is a temporary draft. It would be so, but to put that out there, that can change based on the recommendation of the planning commission. It can change by the board, they may not like our recommendations. They have the right to send it back under state statutes, back to the planning commission as many times as they want for changes or not. See, that's my point right there.
I get it, I get it.
That's why that draft is not out there.
Well, it's a pretty big new ordinance, right?
And you look at.
And there's a lot of people that are impacted by it, all in all, in kind ways.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's been talked about in public meetings, in board meetings and.
And that's why there's statutes in place to make sure the public gets a quote-unquote final draft or recommendation before the public hearing. To put it out there now, it's probably going to change, let's say, 10 times. And that's why the statutes, and that is our job to follow the statutes as such under the Zoning Enabling Act. I know it seems like we should put it all out there, but I may think different than Dan thinks, than Roger may think, than Ron thinks, than Sam thinks, and we're putting all these versions.
But can I suggest if the board is looking for comments and suggestions from people who are impacted and if they're against it or for it and different things, how are we supposed to be informed about what it is to make those comments?
I will not. So in that case, if I were you, I would go to the township and politely ask for a copy of the proposed draft amendment, or the draft itself.
Which I found myself and read it online and came and compared with the differences between the two. But that was my, one of my original points was, I don't, I had to do all that work instead of it being easily presented in a way that highlighted the changes.
If they gave us a draft and they're giving other people, there isn't any reason, I don't think you should not have a draft, but once again, it's going to come back to you. He said, she said this, and it's going to go round and round, because procedurally, the public isn't involved until the public hearing. I don't disagree, I'm not saying that. I'm just making sure that we make sure we do our due diligence on this and before we send it to county or the board. So, but I'd get a copy from the township, I'd ask.
But it sounds like the, you know, this group here doesn't even have, not everybody has a copy of the original and the proposed new. Didn't even know what's changed, so, I mean, it just seems like.
The original is a moot point at this point.
Well, what they did was highlighted, so.
Until we revisit it, they have not directed us, and we can make a recommendation back to the board. But it is not our job to determine, is the original better than what this is?
Who made the changes to the original that we're reviewing here today? This board, this group of people?
They didn't make any changes to the original, they completely. No, no, to you they did. Legally, they repealed and replaced, so they started over, even though it may read the same, but it is a do-over. Even though it may read the same, but it is a do-over. I know, I know.
But it was the board.
It's all semantics, it was the board.
It was the other group.
It was the other.
And, and, and to add.
But I agree with you, we need to get it out there.
To add, when I said earlier that we need to get that original ordinance, because what they said earlier about the previous board wanting to put their stamp on it, now we're going through all of this. There's a procedure we have to follow, because if we don't, it's called the Opens Meetings Act, and we don't wanna even go there. So we gotta be careful. Anyone else, please? One, okay, Phil?
Do you mind if I stand here? I've got a nerve.
Go ahead.
I'm not happy sitting on this chair.
That's why I'm sitting on mine.
Uh, two, two brief comments. One has to do with, um, ordinances in general. And I guess we could use the chicken ordinance modification as a kind of an example of that. I'm not clear, but, you know, I haven't been to all these meetings. How this thing came floated to the surface to begin with, and a couple of people have commented about it, but I'm not gonna get into that. But I don't know in general, how does this ordinance or a major amendment to an ordinance begin to go through the process, where we have a commission and people meeting and talking and back and forth and tabling and stuff like that? How does this thing get the momentum to deserve this much attention in the first place? Because we haven't even done a survey to figure out how many bloody chickens are living here and who hasn't. Are we serving the needs of two people, three people? Do we wanna have a lot more of these people keeping chickens? Is this a great idea? There's, you know, a lot of reasons why not to do this. But some of it has to do specifically with chickens, but it also has to do about how we go about ordinances in general. So, I guess I'd be clear that I'm not in favor of the chicken thing. Uh, the other thing has to do with the rental, short-term rental. And I've rented a lot of places, not particularly short-term, you know, month at a time, a couple of months at a time. And some, um, property owners couch this as a security deposit, some couch deposits as a damage deposit. But if you go ahead and, and tell your clients that this is a security deposit, what the implication could be is that any of, if you agree to comply, you know, because you're gonna post this ordinance in the property, okay? Where you can't possibly miss seeing it, which I've seen in a lot of properties. They put, they put the requirements, rules, and regulations there. And the security deposit can also have implications to have to do with how, whether you get your whole security deposit back. And if you, uh, don't comply and, and are kinda like blatantly non-compliant with the regulations, then maybe you won't get your five hundred dollars back or whatever, whatever deposit is. So that's just a suggestion for owners, how they can get people's attention, because if it's gonna cost people money and if they're gonna, you know, maybe think twice before they light those fireworks off or, you know, build a twenty-five-foot-tall bonfire and, uh, have some kind of a pointy hat rally, I'm not sure what they're gonna do, but. But, uh, I think that does make a difference, how you, um, couch your security deposit to the clients that are there. Because it's hard to get people to read stuff. We all go to the hospital with a doctor, and they decide to sign five different forms, and you know if you don't sign it, you're not gonna go anyplace. So you're just gonna administer it, put your initials and your signatures there, understanding that, you know, everything's probably in good faith and pretty standard. On the other hand, um, reading the requirements and the rules of the house, um, has a lot more meaning if there's some potential dollar impact.
Thank you.
I agree. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you. And one more, anybody, one more? Anyone? Alright. Before we adjourn, I just have an announcement, and I said I would make this announcement for the supervisor. Uh, he wants me to ask if anyone is willing to get involved in training to write grants for any government money available to the township. So I followed through with his request. So being said, that's it. Uh, the motion that we adjourn? Or do you want a board comment?
Yeah.
Okay, go for it.
Just wanted to make a couple of comments, um, first on the chicken ordinance. You know, we were given, um, a recommenda, uh, we were charged by the board to, um, modify or make recommended, recommended changes to what the board gave us to that chicken ordinance. My thinking is that we should probably do a, um, make that a very strict, hard-to-comply-with-or-ordinance, in case it does get recommended, to, uh, the board to change the ordinance thirty-five. Can we, as a planning commission, say, "To heck with that. Our recommendation is no change at all to ordinance thirty-five." In other words, do not have a chicken ordinance. Well, I, I take that back. Have it the way it is now, which is you have to be over two acres. In other words, no changed ordinance thirty-five at all.
Which is what I brought up last time.
Which is what.
You did bring that up. I brought it up last time.
Exactly. Under statute, we have the right after the hearing, we close, we close the hearing and go into like a regular session to not approve recommendation to any changes to the existing ordinance thirty-five. Basically, let it stand as such. We have every right to do that. We do not have to amend anything, and this was just, this is why it comes with recommendation. Now, that being said, the board can approve the recommendation. They can ask us to revisit it if they choose, and we, and they send it back to us. Or they just go forward and do their own thing. But yeah, we absolutely have the right, and that is something to consider.
Yes. You're, you're right about that. Because no matter how, whatever we say and pass on to them for their review, they have the ultimate decision. I, I, anybody else on the board want to comment? Um, I almost overlooked it. We wanna look at maybe scheduling another meeting, so we can handle that legal problem.
I would, well, it's not, I would suggest, until we get a concrete answer about actual ordinance fifty-five, I don't think we should schedule it yet. And that's the board consent, though, that's just my opinion.
Well, as soon as we find that out, then we'll get together and we'll come up with a date.
Fifteen-hour notice.
What about the short-term rental? We gonna let that linger on? Or can we just say, go with what the original was, because they worked on it for two years, and give it to the board, or give it to the public hearing, and then give it to the board? And let them make a decision? Otherwise, we're gonna be prolonging these people, and they don't know where they're at.
I, is, how well-versed is everyone on the, with the original? Is it exactly like this, or they're, I mean, like, I guess that's the question for me. I mean, you're well-versed on it, 'cause you were a part of it, Ron is, um.
They, they did a lot of research for two years. We don't need to linger it on anymore. That's my, my point.
But you must remember, we were not tasked with looking at the original. We were tasked to review this one.
Correct.
So.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna be a little biased here, alright?
Absolutely, sure.
And I'm gonna abstain at this point, because of my interest in what happened. Well, can I ask the board this? 'Cause I did state earlier that I would like to look at the original, just to look at the notes and see that, see what the original looks like. 'Cause that's what you guys looked at. That's what you're basing your decision on, correct, Ron?
I'm basing it on a lot of things.
Okay, but.
I'm sorry.
Alright.
And I don't wanna voice that here.
Okay. Well, so, let me ask this. If we could find out ASAP on that legal ruling, and then come up with one more special meeting, make it, I don't, make it a twenty-minute, just on that one sentence, on that one thing, and then we can maybe make a determination, or make it a half hour, whatever, and get it done then, once and for all, both of them.
Yeah, which should include the short-term rental ordinance, absolutely.
Would that be okay?
It's okay with me.
Which, can you live with that, Ron?
With doing what?
If we could just, he, find out that legal question, we can cover both the chicken and the S T R at the next meeting, and we'll do it ASAP. If he gets the, we find out tomorrow what the ruling is from the lawyer, then we can have a meeting, meeting ASAP and make it short and sweet and to the point, and then vote on it, and get it done.
Again, I will abstain on the V R B O. If you're looking at what happened, the chicken ordinance, I'll, I'll vote on it.
Okay, alright. Can we, is that okay?
We need a motion. Why not just call a motion and make it easy? We don't have to, but I think it makes it easy.
Alright, um, we're gonna, I think to make a motion, we find out the legal legality on your request. Say that again, one more time, your request, that, that legal question?
For ordinance number three, um, for amending ordinance number fifty-five, when it comes to.
For amendments, ordinance fifty-five. And we also cover the S T R, and we make decisions on both at the next public meeting, which will be as soon as possible. Do I get a second?
A second.
Can we get a second? Any discussion on it? No. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for being patient with me. And I wanna thank the audience for being patient with us, although it's been about an hour and a half, but we're gonna get this stuff done. Okay, motion to adjourn.
I made one more point before we adjourn.
Okay.
I don't remember your name now, but.
Chris.
Thank you, Chris with a K.
Yes.
Um, I will reach out to the, um, board tomorrow and see if they, um, would like to make available the early, our proposed early draft, so you can make a direct. I mean, like, I mean, for everybody, I said you already, you have it already now, but I'll, I'll see what they say. If, I mean, at least I can do that much, just to make, I mean, it would not hurt, like you said, it would be based. You'd have something to base public comment on, comparing the two, if it's readily available for people, so I will reach out to them. Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn?
Can I ask one quick question?
Alright, ma'am.
When will we be Zoom capable here?
Beyond me. I have no idea. The township board hasn't done it yet, I don't think. Do you have any comment on it? You know anything?
Nope.
Okay.
I asked Paul when I was up here a couple of weeks ago, and he said they were close and working on it. But it's difficult for some property owners to always be here in person, and it was really nice to be able to zoom in and.
I would hope, yeah, I would hope by June tenth, because I have my next GLEW meeting on, for, at June tenth, and it's here. And they usually don't like to have them here unless they can get access for everyone, electronic or otherwise, so. Here's Holton.
Go ahead, quick.
Okay. So, when you do this, the last board meeting I was at, Paul's the only one that can talk to the lawyer, right?
Well.
How do you go about this, or how do you get a answer from the lawyer?
That's a whole different ballgame.
Well, no, it's not, because it's really.
I know, I know.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm gonna keep my comments to myself. I'll be talking to Paul about that.
They already voted on?
I said, I, I understand, but there's no, no harm in me talking to Paul about that. I have a different version and definite, different definition of what a legal agent is. And whatever the board decides to do, they can undo. If they pass an ordinance, they can rescind an ordinance.
I just don't understand why, why the lawyer can only talk to one person when you're all actually part of the township.
We, we can.
They can.
We can.
Well, you can, but.
No, we can. He can, he's an official.
Right, because he's.
No, I can't.
Well, he can't, but.
He can.
Before, they, they were able to, but that's a whole different ballgame. It's, it's a, it's a legal situation we're dealing with.
So hopefully we get any thing from that lawyer in the waiting, uh, this winter, huh?
I would just like to say with a record, if I could, I would gladly reach out with someone else with me at all times. The way it should be, to get a direct answer and have it on the record, but unfortunately, I'm not able to.
We highly recommended that to the board, to get two people to discuss legal questions and answers, so the rest of the board will have proper transparency. Okay. Alright, any other questions? Alright. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Aye.
Oh, aye.
Aye, aye, y'all passed it.
I must have missed something. Well, I don't know who made the motion.
I did.
Okay. Who seconded?
Alright, bud.
Who seconded? Dude, okay.
So they put the friggin' stamp on this.